Turned off.
Get my camera to my mom. My mom always told me, she said, "You have to bring a camera."
So how many cookies do we have?
How many do I have?
Somebody could say.
I'm there. The cookies are crushed back.
Said Mama Bear.
Back to Jimmy. Jimmy's guarding.
Good morning. We'd like to welcome you.
Where you want. Is this on the shelf?
Here we go.
Are we all on? I'll just light on.
Good morning. We'd like to welcome you to our January 6th Board of Supervisors meeting. If you would please stand and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance and Remain Standing for a moment of silence. Ready? Salute.
By the way, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Again, we welcome you here to our January 6th Board of Supervisors meetings. The following will take place. First, we'll have the swearing-in of the three supervisors who were elected in this November, Supervisors Vanderpool, Ashida, and myself. And the swearing-in will be performed by our Presiding Judge Gerald Sevier. So if the three supervisors would come down into the pit, and could we get the security tape moved? Gentlemen, would you please each raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, John Cox.
Who solemnly swear
Who solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the State of California.
And the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. And if you will now sign the oath of office, please, in the presence of these good people. Thank you, and again, congratulations.
Supervisor Cox, on item number two, I would like to nominate Supervisor Worthley as Vice Chair and Supervisor Phil Cox as Chairman of the Board for 2009.
I second that.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please cast your votes. Giudanamus, thank you. I'll jump right into this, folks. Talking to Supervisor Ashida last week, he said that he waited about three months to give his State of the County address. And I looked three months down to the road, and I didn't see the road being any brighter or clearer or happier than it is today. And so I chose to come right out on the first meeting of the year to do the State of the County address. It's been a difficult last couple of months. I kind of feel like, you know, I've been watching and participating in a World War II movie, you know, where they dig the trenches, and the soldiers are all huddled down their trenches, and they've all got their helmets on, and off in the distance, you can hear the mortars being fired, and they all duck and cover, and you know the mortar's going to hit somewhere around you, you just don't know where, and you hope it doesn't hit in your bunker. And you can hear the mortar coming in, and you hear the explosion and the ground shake, and your head pops up, and you try to see who, you know, who got hit. And that's, I think, the way I felt over the last few months, as we've watched our state budget process moving as slowly as it has been. I feel like every day, we hear a different mortar being fired, and we wonder where that mortar's going to hit. So we don't have any, I don't have any bright and shiny news to share with you this morning, although I would like to highlight some positive things that have happened over the last few years since I've been on this board. You're probably wondering also, is he going to thank his family and wife right up front, or is he going to forget and do it at the very end, being prodded on by either the CEO or one of the other supervisors? Well, I'd like to do it right up front. The last four years has been very exciting for both myself and my family. I've enjoyed the opportunity, the people of this county has given me to serve them. I could not have done this without the support of my family, and especially my wife Connie. She has seen me leave early in the morning, come home very late at night, leave for days at a time, and she very rarely complains about how much I have to be gone. And I'm grateful for the trust that my family places in me, as well as the people of this county. Today also just happens to be our 30th anniversary, so. Although Saturday, I told her I could cut it short. I'd like to first share a little bit, a little insight into each of the supervisors who are sitting up here today. Some things that I've learned from them over the last few years has been helpful to me. First, I'd like to share with you a few thoughts about Connie Conway, who's now moved on to the State Assembly. Most people on the outside thought Connie and I were constantly fighting with each other and bickering and arguing about issues, but nothing could be further from the truth. We saw eye to eye on just about everything that we worked on, and at times, we would love to put on that show in the public for people thinking that we were at odds with each other. But we were very close. I supported her in her chairmanship and her candidacy for the Assembly, and we wish her well on her way in the Assembly. She's up there during one of the roughest times this state has seen, as they struggle to pass their budget. We also have put together a long list of common sense, and I say common sense, legislation for her to move forward as well. At times, we see laws being passed by our legislators, and we wonder, you know, what were they thinking, and, you know, who was mad about this or that issue? So we wish her well and hope that she'll be able to represent us well in the state Capitol. The senior member of this board is now Supervisor Worthley, sitting to my right here. He serves this board very well. He sits at the state level on the mandates board, and also serves on the Valley Air Board, and is a past Chair of that board. I can honestly say that Steve is a true statesman. He has been solid and never wavers from his convictions and his commitment to the citizens of this county. His knowledge of the laws also come in very handy at times as we struggle with certain decisions. Steve has the ability to, when I want to maybe go a little haywire, he has the ability to reach out and grab me and pull me back in and say, "Now, let's think about this a minute before we act." And so that's been, I've appreciated that ability he's had to reach out, and I actually have a bruise on this arm to prove it. Alan, Ashida and I met as we were running for this office four years ago, back, actually five years ago. We've got to know Alan and his wife Wanda very well, and we consider them to be good friends. Alan has fought for the citizens in his district, for the citizens of the county. I've learned a lot about how to get things done by watching Alan and the way he's able to work. He's been very instrumental in forming the Water Commission, the Rail Commission, and has worked hard with state and federal agencies to protect Tulare County and its citizens. Alan has led the board in its lobby to Washington DC also for federal help to aggressively remove marijuana from our national parks. As you know, each year, our sheriff works very hard and has teams that go up into the parks and eradicate the marijuana. They do stings, they pull people out of there. And our Sheriff, Bill Whitman, works very hard and is very dedicated to the citizens of this county and to what is right. There are other counties that have the same problems, but do not address them. They just let it go. They try to catch them as they're coming down the hill. So we, I'm very appreciative of Sheriff Whitman's no-nonsense approach to this. It's a crime, and he's going to take it to them. Alan also was able to help collaborate with the sheriff and several other agencies as Project Locust was carried out this last summer. I'd like to mention Mike Boudreau, Lieutenant Mike Boudreau, who also played a major part in that operation. I was able to attend over at the National Guard a few times and watch how Mike was running from building to building and room to room, making sure things were done, making sure everyone was coordinated. That project also netted several arrests, and several prosecutions are going to take place because of that operation. Supervisor Mike Innes over here to the far right, we keep him over to the far right for a reason. He came on this board a couple years ago, and it's nice having someone around who always has a good joke to tell. There's always that guy that's got the joke. Mike always has a good joke. He always, always is able to bring a smile to our faces and a laugh to our hearts. It's nice having someone like Mike around to do that. And it's been, it's been a process watching him change from a, and I'll say a used car salesman, which he wasn't, but from the used car salesman to a real politician who's been able to really get things done. And he does get things done. He's just taken the leadership of the Tulare County Association of Governments Board and really has made that conversion. And we like to kid him about his car sales, but his experience as a businessman and in the business world has been a true blessing and benefit to this board, the knowledge that he brings in. I have shared an office right next door to his over the last two years, and I can hear him on the phone daily speaking with constituents and people in the county. And I know that he really, truly cares and is here to help take care of those folks and their problems. It's been, it's been a pleasure getting to know him and his wife as well. I don't yet know Pete Vanderpool over here, but I look forward to working with him for the next few years. We've met at a few functions. We've talked for several times. And I wrote in my notes here that we kind of wonder, is Pete really ready for this e-ticket ride? And when I wrote this in there, I realized he probably doesn't know what an e-ticket ride is. So we, so I asked Eric Coyne to go in and explain to him what an e-ticket ride was yesterday. But you truly are, Pete, are in for the ride of your life, and we are thankful, you know. And I look at this, change is good. It's good to have some new blood on the board. It's good to have some new ideas, some new thoughts, a new perspective. You know, all kidding aside, he comes to us, having worked in the family business and in the business community for several years, has a degree, and we look forward to what he has to offer this board and his insight. So Pete, welcome aboard. Now, one does not need to be an economist to realize our nation and the State of California are in deep financial trouble right now. This county government, as an arm of the state government, is likewise impacted by state and federal funding. And our public services are threatened. It's becoming all too clear that local government cannot avoid being caught up in state budget issues, as I mentioned before. This has affected our local funding for transportation, construction projects. Headlines on the paper today was about Mooney Boulevard slowing down. Ted Smalley, our Director of TCAG assures me that that's not going to happen. Correct, Ted? He's nodding his head. So we look, we're very proud of Ted and the job he's done also as a Director of TCAG in working these multimillion-dollar road projects that are so hard to bring to the board. So we're grateful for Ted and his hard work. As a result, the loss of more than $10 million in state funding for healthcare programs. The county was recently forced to issue 300 Health and Human Service Agency workers with layoff notices. And next week, this board will contemplate the closing of two public health clinics and the consolidation of other services. This is a very difficult thing to do. John Davis and his Health and Human Service Agency team have faced tough times these past few months, but have seen the fiscal writing on the wall and tried to prepare for this. In the past 18 months, the state has taken away our baseline funding, reduced our sales tax revenue payments, and diverted other funds totaling millions of dollars. When we meet next week as a board, this board will consider his recommendation for program reductions. It's clear to see that his recommendation to this board during these tough economic times is not easy. John and I have spoken a few times about the sleepless nights we've had. We've been talking about this for about a month and a half, and there have been many sleepless nights because we truly do care and have concern for our employees and their families as we face these tough decisions. The county has no choice but to address the state and federal dollars that have traditionally funded health programs. Tulare County is a poor county. Over the last four years, it hasn't seemed that way, but I've come to, as I travel throughout the state and visit other counties and look at their administration and the dollars they have to spend, Tulare County really is a poor county. We do not have the economic means to fund these programs with local dollars. Our county is not alone in this challenge. Counties and cities up and down the state have also struggled, either contemplating layoffs or have already made similar workforce reductions. And in some cases, employees have stepped forward and offered to stay home without, or even come to work without pay for a couple of days to help make up shortfalls. As the State of California continues to try to reform its budget, our board pledges to continue to fight to preserve funding for vitally needed programs. One such funding that we're currently fighting for is $3.4 million that this county annually receives in Williamson Act subvention payments. We don't know what the state has in store for us next, but we will work hard to weather this fiscal crisis and maintain mandated public services. Again, we're hunkering down in our bunkers. We have our helmets on, and we can hear the mortars coming. We just don't know where they're going to hit. And let there be no misunderstanding. As this board is asked to consider the state takeaways and the decrease in funding from our budget, we will be, we will make sound fiscal decisions with the future in mind. Now, on the lighter side of things now, I'd like to highlight a few things that have happened over the past four years since I've been here. Things that I think are very positive, that have helped move the county forward in a positive direction. And they're not in any particular order. They're just the random order that I typed them out in. We have a new fire department, a new IT department. We have a new CEO sitting up here with us today. We have new leadership in the HHSA department, a new Workforce Investment Director, Tulare County Gang Task Force, the opening and remodeled Visalia Library and a new library in Lindsay. We began fully utilizing the courtrooms at the pre-trial facility. We formed the Youth, Water, and Rail Commission. Now, some of these changes and new commissions were forced by budget concerns and some out of necessity. Faced with the growing costs from the State of California and Cal Fire, this board chose to build a new Tulare County Fire Department. With help of Chief Sunderland, Steve Sunderland, we now have more coverage in the county, six new fire trucks, six, right? Is that right, Steve? Six? Five. And one being built. So I'll say six new fires.
Four being built.
Four being built, okay. So we're going to have nine new fire trucks, new dispatch equipment, and new handheld radios for our firefighters, and much more for the same dollar amount that was in our budget two years ago. Chief Sunderland has done a wonderful job with the resources this board has given him, and we now have our own Tulare County Fire Department. Thank you, Chief. Our new IT department, under the direction of Peg Yates, continues to provide this county with what it needs to get the job done, in many cases, better and faster. One such cost-saving was achieved by moving our phone services to voice-over internet protocol. This department also operates at a savings to the budget. Our new CEO, Gene Russo, has come in and helped us deal with budget shortfalls and the important issues we face on a daily basis. His knowledge of government financing and his fiscal experience have served this county well. He continues to follow the direction of his five bosses, although that sometimes can be difficult. We're pleased with Gene's communication skills, with his communication skills with the department heads and us, and Gene has performed well and above and beyond what we thought he could. So we're very happy with the services of our new CEO. We've also welcomed new leadership to Tulare County Workforce Investment Board, as Adam Peck has assumed the role as its Director. Adam and his staff will play a critical role during these difficult times assisting the county and other employers who are dealing with employee reductions. Adam came in at a very tough time when the workforce dollars were being reduced, and he's also been faced with difficult decisions. And we're thankful that we have Adam in there looking out for the county. Last month, I asked each department head to write me a little note about how the state budget is affecting their departments and their ability to provide services to the citizens of this county. Even though I'm not going to share all of them, I'll just share a few. I can assure you that all the departments have a can-do attitude. They're working with the new business plan that we have in place, and they work very hard for you, the people. Some of them mentioned their accomplishments over the last year, some of them the challenges that they face, some focusing on the future. And nearly all talked about working on a tight budget with very little room to spare. As you know, the governor continues to target several programs for major cuts in his proposed budget. We just received last week his 2009 and 10 budget ideas. And one of those is the in-home supportive services program. Many providers have already seen their hours reduced and face further reductions in the future. The good news is that current staffing and services offered by the public authority will not be reduced or eliminated because of that budget. Our probation department continues to provide services despite its loss of nearly half a million dollars to its budget. Our Chief Probation Officer Janet Honell has been able, with the help of CEO Gene Russo, to keep the doors of the juvenile detention facility open and juveniles moving into that facility as they should. She continues to work with all police agencies in the county and has assigned two probation officers to the gang units, one in the north and one in the south. And having those probation officers in those units gives those units the keys that they need to get their job done. So we're appreciative for her support of that program. Our District Attorney Phil Klein is also facing the possible elimination of grant-funded positions. This could be devastating to the citizens of Tulare County. I say devastating, Phil puts it in a lot harsher words than that, but it could be devastating to the citizens of this county if we lose some of these positions. We will work closely as a board with our state legislators to try to avoid losing these funds. Mr. Klein has also shown a willingness to partner and work outside of the box. He now has employees in the Visalia Police Department, working closely with them, and that partnership has proven to be a very good partnership in saving time and coordinating efforts between the two departments. Our Resource Management Agency, under the direction of Henry Hash, has a plate full of projects it is working on. The board gave direction last year to that agency to work on improving Sequoia Field Airport and make it ready for commercial use. The runway has just been completed this year, and taxiways and storm drain lines are on the left next. We're waiting for our next round of funding from the FAA. RMA is also in the middle of right-of-way acquisition for the second phase of Row 80 and the 108 expansions. These are important roadways in our county that provide access to the north and to the south. Many departments continue to work with vacancies. We know that at times, this puts pressure on the remaining employees to perform above and beyond the call of duty. For this, we're grateful. One such employee is a dear friend of mine, Darlene Miller. Darlene, are you here today? Would you stand up, please? I've known Darlene for over 20 years. She's worked in our CPS department for 22 years now, Darlene?
I've worked here 20 years, and I'm licensed.
So she's been with the county for over 20 years. We've been friends. Our children have grown up together. And I've listened to Darlene for the last 20 years talk about how she loves her job, how she loves and has loved protecting the little children. That is so important today, that we protect our little children. Much of what we do as a county, a lot of the services we provide are protecting our little children. And I can assure you, Darlene is dedicated to the work that she does. And there are many such workers like her in this county. I just wanted to thank Darlene. I know you personally, Darlene, and I know your dedication, your commitment to your job, your commitment to the youth has been very meaningful to me. So thank you, Darlene. I'd like to say, Darlene, we're going to make your workload lighter, but that's not going to be possible at this time. And my new phrase has become, "It is what it is." And my new phrase has become, "It is what it is," and sometimes you have to play with the hand that life deals you. And right now, this is the hand that life has dealt us. This is the hand that the state has dealt us. I'd like to share with you a few programs and efforts that we're engaged in as a board to make this county a better place to live. Most of us are not aware of the Ag Commissioner and what he does. Once a year, we receive a report from him. One such program that he oversees is Glassy Wing Sharpshooter. Now, I wouldn't know a Glassy Wing Sharpshooter if it landed on my hand right now in front of me, but through his efforts, the county, the Ag Department, and their partnership with citrus growers, property owners, and many government agencies have been able to stop the northward movement of this pest, which has the ability to completely wipe out our grape industry. So Gary is to be commended for his hard work in that area. And in the little notes I received from each of the department heads, his comment was, "Well, I don't know how exciting Glassy Wing Sharpshooters are, but the work we're doing is very important to the economy of this valley." So thank you, Gary. The Tulare County Water Commission, headed up by Supervisor Alan Ashida, has been very active this last year and a half. The Water Commission was successful in obtaining a total of $3 million in grant funding from the state of California. And we're gonna hope that that check clears. This money will help study, part of it will help study the nitrate problem we have in our area and help us to develop long-term solutions to the drinking water issues in many disadvantaged communities within the Tulare Lake Basin. The Tulare County Youth Commission was also formed this year with community representation from every district. The purpose of this commission was to first administer the Step Up Youth Grants, and that commission completed this assignment last month by recommending the awarding of $70,000 in grant monies to youth groups throughout Tulare County. They'll next work on the Step Up Service Learning Program, partnering with high schools throughout the county. This board has been and will continue to be dedicated to the youth in Tulare County because the youth are our future. We will do the best to help the youth in whatever their needs might be. The Tulare County Gang Task Force has also been busy this past year and a half. The group has taken messages of hope to over 7,000 citizens in Tulare County, half of which were youth. The message is that there is life after gang lifestyle. You don't need to be in a gang to survive. Violence is not the way. You don't need to take drugs to be happy. We have sponsored seven Step Up community events since December of 2007 and have partnered with local community leaders in each of those areas to provide information to the citizens specific to their needs. These events have been held in Visalia, Ivanhoe, Cutler, Arosi, and Dinuba, and we're now in the planning stages for Exeter and Porterville. There are over 120 members of this task force working together in a single effort. Partnerships have been formed between agencies and service providers who have never worked with each other before. It's been exciting to be part of this movement, and I hope this board will continue to support the efforts of the Step Up program in the future. Another partnership that was formed because of the Gang Task Force and working with the city of Visalia in its efforts is the Loop Bus. There's actually two Loop Buses, one in the city of Visalia, which after school and then during the summer drives from youth center to youth center and by some schools, picking up kids, taking them to youth center. The county also has a Loop Bus system that brings youth from the unincorporated areas of the county into the cities. This year, we served over 2,200 riders on the county Loop Bus service, all free of charge. This board voted to use a small amount of our measure, our dollars, to provide this service. This service helps keep kids off the street, get some of the youth centers where trained adult mentors and supervisors can work with them on a daily basis. The areas that we've served are Visalia, Goshen, Lanell Camp, Ivanhoe, Patterson Track, New London, Dinuba, Cutler, Arosi, Porterville, East Arosi, and Seville. This has been a wonderful program that will help save some of our children from making the wrong choices and help give them the life skills they will need to navigate this life. We've taken the approach, it's much more cost-effective to save our children before they get to our juvenile detention facilities. Costs us a lot less to do that as well. Another partnership I'd like to mention is one we have with the cities in Tulare County. We meet monthly with representatives of the Council of Cities. A Blue Ribbon Committee has also been formed, which meets monthly, to work on detailed issues the larger group comes up with. It is here in this setting where we will all come to the table and work together on such issues as the county and city general plans, impact fees, regional mitigation projects, and many others. Last year, we also celebrated two important milestones, the rededication of a newly remodeled Visalia Library, and in partnership with the city of Lindsay, the grand opening of a newly constructed Lindsay Library. By investing in the future education of our youth and children and ways to enhance the lifelong learning of our residents, we continue to work hard to make Tulare County a better place to live. For the past four years, I've heard each of our board chairs sit here in this, not this same chair, but at this dais, and say by this summer, our general plan will be complete. I'm not gonna make that promise. (laughter) I've learned my lesson well.
Get her done.
And we heard such things as "get her done," and it's still not done. I'm not gonna make the promise that we'll have our plan complete this summer. I don't know when our plan will be complete, but what I can assure you is that we will continue to work on the general plan. We will continue to write a plan that will be acceptable to the public and the General Attorney of the State, or the Attorney General. No matter how long it takes, no matter what it takes, we will have a complete and acceptable general plan. Now, declining local property tax values, state fiscal challenges, and national economic crisis will all take a heavy toll, as they already have. But Tulare County has always been fiscally conservative. We will make sound choices. We always try to look long-term. Some of these decisions will be painful. The county has to make tough choices now to prepare us for a brighter future. For at least the next two years, we anticipate tough budget times, at least the next two years, we'll face many tough choices together and come to conclusions that will be fiscally sound, keeping the future of this county in mind. Having owned a small construction business for over, for nearly 25 years now, I've learned a few things. It's taught me some important things, and I think helped prepare me to sit in this chair today. I've learned a few things that I'd like to share, that I learned from my years as a contractor. First, sometimes life is not easy. You might think it's not fair. That's just the way it is. It is what it is. Second, sometimes you have to make tough decisions and live with the decisions you make. I can assure you, this board is prepared to face and make tough decisions as needed. The third thing I learned, if you stay strong and are able to make those choices and stick with them, you'll be here to do business another day. Our goal is to stay focused on the future, is to provide the services to the citizens of this county that you deserve. And I pledge to you that we will do our best, not only as myself, but as a board, to keep your trust that you've entrusted us with and to lead and guide this county in a fiscally sound manner. That's the end of my comments, so I'd like to thank you for coming today. Thank you for listening that a little bit longer than I had anticipated, but as you can see, I'm gonna refer back to my notes from my department heads. I asked every department head to tell me what the effects of the state budget was and then to give me the silver lining. One of my department heads gave me a long list of ways the state budget could affect their department. And the very bottom said, "Silver lining," in big, bold, capital letters, "None." I agree and I disagree. It's very tough to find silver linings in these economic times, but it is very easy to find silver linings in the dedication and hard work of the people that work for Tulare County, the elected people that are serving you in Tulare County. There's just not five elected people here, we have several others. We have our sheriff, our district attorney, our assessor, tax collector, we have other elected people here that you've entrusted to lead and guide this county, and we will do so with the future in mind. And we appreciate the hard work of the employees of this county, although we will be faced with tough decisions here in the next few weeks and in the months to come. Folks, it's not over. We don't know what our budget is yet because the state hasn't got theirs. As soon as we have our budget, we may be faced with additional cuts, but we will face those and we will not turn away. So thank you for attending, and know that this board is here to represent you and here to answer any questions you might have. So thank you for attending today. We do have a, we're going to have a 10-minute break at this time, and in the back of the room, we do have some cookies and punch for those that would like to stick around. We'll take a 10-minute break, and we'll be back here at 10 minutes to 10. So thank you. (applause)
We lost one.
We must have had a lot of family here.
Okay, who's responsible for Supervisor Vanderpoel?
He's, uh, he's, uh...
I didn't say a thing. Okay, we're back now. We will move to the public comment time. I'm gonna read a short statement. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Understate law matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the board. For items appearing on the agenda, the public is invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for board consideration. Any person addressing the board will be limited to a maximum of three minutes so that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak, with a total of 15 minutes allotted for the public comment period time. At all times, please use a microphone and state your name and address for the record. Is there anybody that would like to address this board during public comment? Seeing done, we will move to Board of Supervisor matters. Supervisor Ennis. We lost our crowd, we should've done this before we let 'em go, huh?
Yeah. Well, I'll be, I'll be meeting with the Porterville City Council tonight on mosquito control, and we'll be taking Larry Dosen with me to update the people in Porterville and the city council on all the diseases that mosquitoes do carry. I think it's very important that the people of Porterville, Lindsay, and the county area of southeastern Tulare County have a chance to vote on this issue, and they need to have a survey go out and find out if the people want it or not. And that's all we're really asking for. So hopefully, we can get that across to the city council tonight, and hopefully, taxpayers will have a chance to vote on this and see whether they want the service or not. So that's all I have.
Supervisor Ashida.
Well, first off, I'd like to welcome Mr. Vanderpoel as our new member to the Board of Supervisors. You'll find that it's a little different than what we think it is when we are first elected or running for the office. And I think one of the motivations when I ran for office was I was tired of the state of California and everybody else putting regulations on me as a farmer or a businessman. And instead of complaining about it, you run for office and see if you can change that. Well, the one thing I did find out is that no matter what burdens I believe the government puts on private business to operate, government places a bigger burden on government to do business. And that's probably the root of the current financial problems we have in the state of California and the United States with the budget. When government regulations make it so expensive for us as government entities to provide services to our people. And I was asked earlier, what's the solution to the budget problem? Well, we need to look at how we do business at government, is the SEQA reviews, the environmental impact reviews that we have to do. Another issue would be that we have to look at cost analysis benefits of what we do. And this recent California Air Board ruling on the diesel engines, which will cost the government and the private sector $5 billion, is that cost-effective? Could we be spending $5 billion, maybe in medical research or something else, that we would get a bigger return for our investment? Another issue is we need to look at prevailing wages. Prevailing wages cost local governments, well, mostly counties. City charter cities are exempt from prevailing wages in most cases. But prevailing wages adds approximately 40%, 30% to 40% to a cost of a construction project, either a building or a road. Then if you look at financing that cost difference over 30 years, you're at least tripling to five times that amount of final cost to the taxpayer. The last thing we need to look at, not particularly Tulare County, but the state of California needs to look at the relationship that we have with our unions. And if you go to Sacramento, you will hear many times that Sacramento is not run by the legislature, but it's run by the unions. So, although those are very bold statements, and I stand behind them, and next year, a year from today, we could be really looking at some drastic things that could hurt the residents of Tulare County. I'm very proud to have spent four years on the Board of Supervisors with a group of individuals who've spent a lot of time in Sacramento and Washington DC to help prevent what's happening now. And we will continue to work in Washington DC and Sacramento to protect the interests of our residents. So thank you very much for a great four years, and we look forward to the next four years.
Well, I just wanted to say, first of all, congratulations to you, Phil, being the chairman, and I look forward to that coming year, and welcome to Pete Vanderpoel, and for Alan Ashida coming back on the board. This board works well together, and it takes an effort to do that, it doesn't just, it's not a happenstance. We make an effort to be collegial, on and off the dais, and I think it pays great dividends to our constituents. One thing I did want to say, I think, is that notwithstanding the difficulties, as you've enunciated in your prepared remarks, Tulare County is sound financially, our retirement system is well-funded, we are a resilient county. It's one of the benefits of coming from a poor county, is learning to live with our poverty, as we weather storms probably a little bit better than some of those who are not used to that kind of a lifestyle. And we have done some things to protect and preserve ourselves that will help us weather this storm, where we know a lot of other counties and cities are struggling, and in a sense, it sort of forms a buffer for us because the state of California could ill-afford to allow 58 counties to go bankrupt, cities to go bankrupt, and so forth. And that's really to our advantage, that other counties and cities are struggling much greater than we are. It's nice to be in that position, I think. I would rather be there than be in those counties' positions. So it will be a struggle, it will be a challenge, but I appreciate this board in that we are not a knee-jerk reaction type of a board. We make reasoned decisions, we stand by those decisions, and I think that has served our county well. And again, it's difficult, these are difficult times, it's never easy when you look at laying off. It's one thing to eliminate positions that are unfilled, it's another to eliminate positions that are filled. That means there's a body, there's a person, there's a family affected by that. Those are not easy decisions that will be made, but they have to be made because it is what it is, as you say, and we have to live within the finances that we have available to us. So overall, and to sort of speak to something that Alan brought up, we do play a lawful lot of defense. You know, it seems like most of the time, we're in Sacramento, Washington DC, acting defensively, trying to stop stupidity from being magnified. I do think difficulties financially provide opportunities for offense, opportunities to look at fundamental changes in the way we do business as government, and I think that we might, as a county, be able to assist in that regard too, because we have a track record and we know something about how do you survive difficult times. So my hope is that as we deal with these difficult times, the only constraining factor in government is finance. If there's unlimited dollars, you've got unlimited... If there's unlimited dollars, you've got unlimited government. I don't think any of us want that. So, I think an opportunity now presents itself to look at how do we really examine ourselves as governmental agencies and determine what are, what are the critical missions we have to do, and stripping off those things which are not critical to the mission, and then being more cautious about what we bring onboard as we have more funding. So, I'm, I'm an optimist. I think, I think this is going to be difficult times, but I think we will come out of it stronger, leaner, better operating like a business than, than a government agency normally has in the past, I think, so I look forward to it.
Great. Why's Vanderpoel?
Well, I'm leaning into the microphone for the first time, and I must say, it's, it's a lot different of a perspective than being out there, as I have been for the, a little over a year, and being up here feels great, and just, you know, wish I could have thanked my family and everyone, and in front of everyone, for, for coming and being here. I really appreciated all that my family did for me to get me to this point, and I appreciated all my friends and their undying support, and, and I really appreciate all the support and from, from the endorsements and from the people in the community who saw it in me to, to put me in this position, and like every, all of my fellow supervisors have mentioned, these times are going to be very difficult, but I think that difficult times will bring out the very best of, of the leadership in front of us, and I, and I think that we're going to be able to weather the storm and, and get through it, and hopefully, we'll, we'll come out of it being better for that. And I, and I really appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I look forward to working with all of my fellow board members and working with all of the department heads and everyone else in Tulare County, and look forward to remembering who put me here, and, and that's definitely what it's going to take to, to get the job done, and so hopefully, the next four years will be great, and the, the coming years will also continue to be great, and, you know, we'll get through this storm, and please feel free to approach me or, you know, with any ideas or critiques or criticisms, and how I can do my job better, and, and how we as a board can, can better serve you, the people. So, thank you very much for this opportunity, and I'm, I'm happy to be here and look forward to working for you. So, thank you.
All I have to say is I am looking forward to this year. This is going to be a challenging year, but as Supervisor Worley said, I'm very optimistic as well, that this will be a good year, that we will come out on top, we will be here to do business another day. That is something that I think this county has always been able to do, having weathered much larger hits than this in the, in the past. So, I look forward to working with each and every one of the board members this year. We will next go to our consent calendar. There is one change, item number 11, April, instead of April 17th, the dark day will be April 14th. It's the only change I have of the consent calendar. Anything else, board members? Entertained a motion?
Motion with consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
District two.
Motion carries unanimous. Consent calendar is passed. Let all those that need to go back to work go. Excuse me. Our next item is a public hearing. Item number seven, recourse, request from RMA to certify this reviewed and considered information contained in the addendum for file environmental impact report for change of zone PZ 08009.
Report to consider an amendment, to consider a zone change, abbreviated version, for Gillespie Ag Chemicals and Cotton Center. The applicants ask for rezoning to expand an existing ag chemicals business located on three adjacent acres that are currently zoned M1 for light manufacturing. Zone change will affect approximately two acres of land currently being used for row crops in the AE 20 exclusive agriculture 20 acre minimum. Five acre parcel will be created. The 1996 Poplar Cotton Center community plan designates the land use on the rezoning sites as industrial reserve. Sub parcels are within the boundaries of the Poplar Cotton Center Services District, although they're not yet hooked up. Zone changed land is just outside the Poplar Cotton Center redevelopment project area, but could be, could be included in the next redevelopment plan update. Properties to the north are zoned AE 20 and contain row crops. To the east are M1 businesses and AE 20 orchards. South are M1 and M2 heavy manufacturing businesses. West are AE 20 orchards. There are two new residential subdivisions proposed about a mile southwest of the site, south of Avenue 150, Poplar. The photo of the ag chemicals business on Road 192, equipment storage yard, the site proposed for the zone, just north of the yard, north, looking east at the orchards across 192, and south towards Avenue 152. At the Planning Commission Public Hearing on October the 22nd, there was no opposition to, here if you have any question. Public hearing to receive public comments regarding the zone change. Do you have any questions for me at this time?
Questions, board? Seeing none, we open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to address the board on this item, please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Morning, Sherman Cox, members of the board. I'm Jim Winton. Business address is 150 West Morton, Porterville. I'm here in behalf of Gillespie Ag Services and property owner Jerry Burns. As April indicated, this zone change and subsequent lot line adjustment will allow for the expansion primarily for additional storage area for Gillespie Ag Services. Staff, the staff report indicates the property is in a industrial reserve zone, so it seems appropriate for the expansion of the business. If you have any questions, I'll try to respond to them. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wish to address the board? We'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board.
I would move for approval.
Second.
Cast your votes. Unanimous vote. Thank you very much. Our next item on the gin is item number eight, also a public hearing, request from our fire department to confirm the county that is modified for fire hazard abatement cost recovery. Place the cost on the county tax rule as special assessments against respective parcels of land.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Cindy Delman. I'm a fire inspector for Tulare County Fire Department. CCFD is requesting the board to order the costs associated with the abatement of fire hazards recorded in the office of the county recorder as a lien. The contractor's cost plus administrative fees came to a total of $6,857.50 for the cleanup of 10 parcels throughout Tulare County. We request the county auditor place such cost on the county tax rule as special assessments. Last, we request the board to adopt the attached resolution with Exhibit A, the parcel analysis, and Exhibit B, the proposed nuisance abatement lien. Contractor's cost is $4,247.50. The administrative fee is $2,610. Do you have any questions for me this morning?
Any questions? We'll now open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to address this board on this item, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
Thank you.
Approval, Mr. Chairman? Second.
Both by Mr. Worley, second by Mr. Ennis. All those cast your vote, and it is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Have a good day.
Thank you. Supervisor Vanderpoel, the meetings will not always run this quickly. Of course, moving. We do have items on our closed session agenda, so we will adjourn to closed session. Would you like to announce the items that we will be hearing?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you have items. I'm so sorry about this, Supervisor Vanderpoel. Items A through O on your board's closed session agenda, I do anticipate that there will be announcements. Item D. It's going to be D and G. Announcement out of closed session today, January 6th, 2009, by Kathleen Bales Lang, County Council. In the matter of item D on the board's closed session agenda, Gibson et al. versus County of Tulare et al., the board voted to authorize provision of a defense and a defense to the individual employee defendants with a reservation of rights. That was done on motion of Supervisor Ashida, seconded by Supervisor Ennis, on a unanimous In the matter of item G, Teles versus Job et al., the board voted to authorize the provision of, to defend that action and to provide a defense to the individual employee defendants with a reservation of rights on motion of Supervisor Ashida, seconded by Supervisor Worley, on a unanimous vote. There are no other...